I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, November 18th, 2019. We're here for the purpose of the committee of the whole. It is 8:43. I ask that Clark Loon to call. Roll.
Leader.
Here.
Dun.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmski.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy. Absent. Conquest. Absent. Brennan.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter. Here. Sabatino.
Here.
Well, here to absent.
Okay. While in attendance to absent, we have a quorum to announce. Any announcements? Public comment. Any in the audience wish to address counsel at this time? Anyone? Corey? No? Okay. On to business before committee. City manager, I'll turn it over to you. We skipped the police department last time. I assume they're up first?
That is correct. We'd like to start with police and then move into public works. Public works has got a big chunk of budgets there, so if we can get those two tonight, I think that would be a good effort. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Ruth. Also with us is Deputy Chief Tannahill, and that starts on page 123.
Okay. Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I just want to give you a bit of an overview in terms of where we are in the police department year-to-date. Our current authorized staff is 68 sworn, and that number has stayed consistent for the last 10-plus years. We are currently down one officer. We're in the process of trying to fill an academy slot for January, so we're -- all in all, we're in pretty good shape with one officer down. Some year-to-date crime totals. As of October 31st, robbery is flat with eight. Assaults are down slightly compared year-to-date. Aggravated assaults are slightly up. Aggravated assault would be an assault with a weapon. Residential burglary is slightly down, 18 compared to 24 year-to-date last year and 21 the year before. Theft remains flat. Retail theft, we've seen an increase in retail thefts. We're up 121 year-to-date compared to 100 at the same time last year. Deceptive practice and ID theft has continued to climb over the last several years. It's a trend that's very hard for us to investigate. Takes a lot of staffing time in terms of investigations, but we do our best with that. Weapon offenses is an area that we've seen an increase in. Unlawful use of a weapon is up. We've had 17 year-to-date compared to five last year, same period of time. Weapon by a felon, possession of a weapon by a felon is also up. We've had four year-to-date and compared to one at the same period of time last year. We have had some -- we've had some successes in terms of, you know, last budget year. We're finishing up the camera program. We've got 46 cameras installed at 13 locations throughout the city. As of late this afternoon, they have to install a few more from -- to cover Route 83. We're waiting for some approvals from the Illinois Department of Transportation, and there's one other location in town that we're upset. So that project was recently finished up within the last two or three days, and it's been quite helpful for us. We arrested a residential burglar on the north end of town as a result of our license plate readers. So that in conjunction with working together in the community and using some of the technology that's out there, we've had some very good luck and successes with it. Our state accreditation program, ILEEP, we received that right around December of last year, so we're in the 11th month of that, and we're doing very good with that, staying current with policies, best practices, and those requirements for that. This year so far, we've lost our canine, Diesel, who'd been with us for several years, and we recently put a new canine into service, Ozzy. So he's completed his training. He's got some additional more training, but Ozzy is active and on the streets now. He's working the midnight shift for the next couple of weeks. So in terms of what we're looking to do for 2020 is we're going to continue our community partnerships, working with the Park District. We had several events last year, or this year rather, at Eldridge Park with a fishing derby that we've hosted. We went to maximum attendance at that, and--
Chief, what's the name of that fishing derby?
It's Eldridge -- it's called Cops and Bobbers.
Just wanted to get that on the record. Cops and Bobbers.
Cops and Bobbers.
Okay.
We have -- and actually, most of the officers that are involved in that are volunteering their own time, come on, and the Police Benevolent Association dedicated some money, and we give away gifts and gift prizes, and it's a fun time to be had by all, especially those that aren't fisher -- aren't fishermen. We also did a public safety night over at Barron's Park. It was our first time ever. We partnered up with the fire department and put something together for that, and there were several hundred people showed up in attendance. We didn't quite know if anybody was going to show up that evening, but they did, and it turned out very well. So we're going to be looking at expanding that and getting more involvement. Again, we'd like to do it with participation with the fire department. We've been working together. We want to expand our relationship with the school district, with visibility and reviewing their safety plans and going through all the things that the schools are now the high points of violence, and we want to make sure that we continue with that. Some of the new programs that we're going to be rolling out in 2020 and expanding greater is the community camera program, and just expand that. We've got some people that are registering their cameras, but as residential cameras become much more predominant and prevalent, utilizing that technology in conjunction with our license plate reader is really going to target harden our community and make us a safer community and safer place to live. Neighborhood roll call is also going to be a program we will continue. We hit the 5,000 mark since we started the program. We hit 1,025 this year, and so it's 5,000. Our drug takeback is also going to continue for 2020. So far year-to-date, we've had 624 pounds, but we started the program in 2014, and we've brought in 3,800 pounds of drugs. So one of my mathematicians put this together, and they said it's 1.9 tons. 1.9 tons of prescription meds have been turned into the police department for destruction. Basically, it's incineration rather than going into our water stream. So that gives you an idea of the direction that we're heading for 2020. Our goal was to remain flat in the area of the budget that was not personnel-related. So -- but there were a couple of things that we did try to do, looking to reduce some expenses. One of the vehicles that was due for replacement is called PD-39. It was a 2004 van that we've been using since 2004, and we use it to transport equipment and sometimes personnel to our training site at the range or something, and so it really doesn't get a whole lot of use. So we made a determination after speaking with the deputy chiefs that let's not replace the vehicle for whatever it could possibly be, $45,000, $50,000 for a -- for a -- you know, for another van, a similar van. And then if we needed a van, if we put an extra couple hundred dollars in one of our line accounts, we could just rent it from Enterprise because we would only use it for a day or two at the most, and that was much more financially responsible than making that expenditure of that type of a vehicle. And the other thing that we did for vehicles for this year was to hold the replacement of two of our detective cars. They're in pretty good shape. The maintenance on them at our public works garage, they do a great job, and to push that off to 2021. So we're looking at those specific areas to keep that going. In regards to page -- in regards to police department budget on page 123, under 3092, we have one position, which is contract staffing, and a decision was made a few years back to rather than hire an employee as an employee, a city employee, we made a decision to contract that service out and to have a person brought in through a temp agency, and that way we wouldn't have the budgetary or the pension exposure and some of the other costs associated with that. And that's worked out pretty well for us, so we're going to continue that at 3092, and the slight increase that we did put on there was based on a CPI. In 5001, on page 124, under buildings, our chiller for their air conditioning unit is out of service. In the last few years, we've brought in a rental unit to keep the building cool. The cost for fixing the chiller unit was, as I recall, it was $750,000, $800,000 to replace that. And as we were looking at the age of the building and trying to determine what we were going to do, I was reluctant to throw that kind of money into a building if the building gets changed or replaced. So we have not spent that money in the past, and it's been encumbered or carried over, and we'll plan on doing that again for this year. So there's a slight increase in the chiller under 5001. And I'll put up any questions.
If I can add just a couple of things to the budget. The estimated, the line that Chief was just talking about, 5001 buildings, the 450,000 was the water leak that we had when the pipe broke at PD this year. That's why it's so high over what was budgeted. That was reimbursed through our insurance. And then one other item that I want to point out is 8023 building improvements. Right now, we are talking about the state of the police station and what the future lies at the Public Affairs and Safety Committee. No determination has been made as to when that's going to happen. However, we have put placeholders in for the design and for the construction, and that's what those numbers represent in '20 and '21. And now if we have questions, we're happy to answer.
Any questions for police folk? Alderman Bram?
I'm sorry, did you say Bram or Levin?
Bram.
Okay. I know you looked that way. I just wasn't sure. Just a couple of questions on the police budget. I know, Chief, you already touched on the license plate readers.
Yes.
Are we -- does the department feel that, and yourself feel, that we don't need to purchase any more license plate readers, that what we've approved this year and previous years and where we're going with wrapping up installations is all we need to assist in any investigations throughout the city?
Yes. Deputy Chief Mike McLean did some extensive work on this and really laid out, location-wise, all the major ingress and regress points of the city. So we believe upon the two or three spots to finish up the project, we will in essence have a geo-fence throughout the city.
Okay. I mean, that's great to hear. I mean, when it was discussed, I don't know, two, three years ago, I was a little bit reluctant about throwing up cameras all over the place. I've seen and I've definitely bought into the benefits of having license plate readers throughout town, and I'm glad that yourself and Deputy Chief McLean has investigated it further. I feel that we can continue, but if we're comfortable at this time, then I won't make any recommendations to spend any more money. The only other question I have is in regards to overall salaries and wages. It seems like, and you can correct my assumptions, and that's on page 123, it seems like that the salaries for full-time are going up approximately $200,000, a little bit more for -- a little bit over the current estimated for this year, but relatively significant from the budgeted of last year to this year for the part-time, and then overtime is continuing to increase as well. I know you said we're down, I think, one sworn officer. Is that part of the rationale of the increase on the full-time? And if you can kind of talk to what is our strategy to kind of level off the overtime pay and if there is any potential of the full-time?
Yeah. Full-time is we're not increasing the authorized strength of the department, so that's just going to be based on some contractual issues that we have in place. Our civilian staff remains static as well, so that's really kind of all I can say with regard to salary. But the overtime is creeping up. We experienced some injuries with personnel this year that were longer-term, where two officers with knee surgeries, one officer with shoulder surgery, so they're out extended periods of time, so that kind of hit us. When an officer retires, we hire a new officer. From a budgetary standpoint, it looks pretty quick. So if the officer retires on, you know, April 1st, and we hire somebody to replace him on April 2nd, you could look at that, you know, budgetarily and say, well, you're pretty smooth, but -- or you're even. But the reality is, is bringing that officer, getting him to the police academy for three months, putting him in field training for another three months, so they're not functional by themselves, at least till the six-month mark. So that body, although it's present, it's not a functional, working body, so that puts us behind as well. So we experience that. The other thing is, you know, FMLA officers are using Family Medical Leave Act compared to previous years, so that's a kind of a generational thing that we're obligated to follow. But the, you know, there is a proposal that the union has made to us about going to 12-hour shifts, and, you know, they tell us that they believe that that may reduce overtime. My colleagues, police chiefs in DuPage County, who've got similar-type schedules, have experienced a decrease in overtime. So I guess time will have to tell on that one.
Thanks.
Alderman Levin?
Thank you. I too had a question about overtime, which you've largely answered. The only part I wanted to ask, and maybe it is contingent upon how the hourly staffing, the shift staffing goes, but as we've moved up over the years in overtime, we're -- we've got a million dollars plus of overtime on about $8 and $8.5 million in wages. Is there a point where we look at whether it's we're short in staffing as opposed to going with overtime, understanding what the pension costs are, et cetera? Has that ever been -- is there a metric or has that ever been looked at?
Thanks. So Chief and I were just talking about that today, and clearly you can make the argument for additional officers. The problem is in scheduling that, you don't know when you're going to have that injury necessarily, kind of schedule out the retirements. Some of that overtime is reimbursed, as I understand it, through grants, so it's not a true million-dollar cost to the city of Elmhurst. But we do keep that in mind, would another -- would an additional officer help? What we try to do is staff up with the part-time officers. That's proven very beneficial for us in hiring those officers and deploying them.
All right. One other question, Mayor?
Yes.
Thanks. The line 8038, I got a little confused on this because these were the license plate -- these were the--
8038?
98.
8098, sorry. Hold on a second here. 8098. But, you know, I was looking at the budget book from last year, and I could have, you know, it says we had, I thought, $250,000 in 2019, and this one shows $500,000. Did it get rolled forward and then spent?
Correct.
Okay. And so that exhausts the entire program in terms of what we're trying to acquire in the way of cameras?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
Additional questions for Chief Ruth? Bob Dunn?
I have a question on the Ducom cost. So line 3018, it's about $900K this year and the same budgeted for next year. I'm looking at your -- in the narrative for the police department. It says there's 13,600 responses to 9/11 calls. Is that what we're getting out of Ducom? 13,000 calls? Because, so I'm doing the math here. 900,000 divided by 13,000, it's $66 a call. It seems high to me. So I'm me gunning.
And that's just one factor, the metric. And so if somebody calls in a suspicious person, they call into 911, an officer is dispatched. But Ducom also handles our routine radio traffic, so when an officer makes a traffic stop, that's called into Ducom. They're checking criminal records and all of those things. When an officer gets out of the car to do community engagement, they're docking that, they're logging that into the system as well. So, you know, there's the volume of 911 calls that come in, but Ducom is the lifeline of us. If you call 911, whether it's as we sit right in here or two miles west, that call's getting answered by Ducom, it's going to get dispatched by Ducom. So, you know, that's -- Ducom is also part of the records management system that we have. Their CAD, their computeriated dispatch system is linked to our police reporting system so that all those systems talk to each other and work together. Right.
Additional questions for Chief Ruth? Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. So I'm on page 124, line item 8023. So with that $1.5 million, the year prior is $1.65 million, so an increase year-over-year. I'm assuming we didn't use the dollars last year. So what are these dollars earmarked for and why the increase?
So that -- you're correct. We did not use those dollars. That is an estimate for design of police station.
So that decision's at the committee--
That's correct.
-- upper your earlier comment?
That's correct. And as I said, it's also a placeholder. It may not be in 2020 and 21. We may have to push that out. We haven't, not knowing exactly what we're going to do, we haven't made that determination.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Levin?
Sorry. There was just one other comment I wanted to make, and we've talked about this in public safety, but I want to just share it with some of the other aldermen. We get a lot of calls for people about speeding in town, in particular on cut-through streets, whether it's if you're in the north and York area or particularly the St. Charles and York area, amongst others, we get -- and I don't know if other aldermen get it, but I get a lot of calls. And remarkably, I said to the chief, maybe we need more resources for enforcement, and he's assured me that we're okay, that we can cover it, but I think it's something as a council that we should keep an eye on. We're balancing having people getting offended by getting a speeding ticket and why are the police bothering me with all the other people saying, who's this speeding down my street? And in a couple of the instances where we've had stop sign issues, the people who are speeding down the street were literally the people who came to the public safety committee meeting, and they were caught on radar. So who's speeding around town? Well, I guess we are. But I think it's something we ought to keep an eye on over this year or so to say, you know, to sort of gauge whether the safety's more important than offending people who might be concerned about getting tickets, but it's a continuing topic. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add. It was more of a statement.
You know, for next calendar year, and depending on how the scheduling turns out, one of the proposals that we have internally is to start a two-car traffic unit, and we'd be looking at utilizing, you know, with -- currently, the mission team handles a lot of drug offenses, but what we've seen is the number of drug offenses over the years have gone down. And as January 1st comes, cannabis is going to be decriminalized for the most part, and most of the arrests that we make statistically are dealing with those low-level drug offenses. So one of the things that we're looking at is reassigning some personnel that were previously in that unit and opening up a traffic unit where two traffic cars would be out there handling specific traffic complaints along with the beat cars assigned to that area. So again, we've got several kind of -- several things all pending on other things, but it's definitely on, no pun intended, it's on our radar, and we hear the complaints from our residents and community as well.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Bram?
Actually, Chief, what you just stated actually brought up a question, which is on page 124, and that's forfeitures expenses, but also, I guess, on the revenue side of forfeitures. Due to the change in Illinois state law of recreational cannabis starting Jan. 1, do -- what is your insight, if you will, on how will that change forfeitures? How will that change overall police stops as well?
I don't see it making a big change. It's still illegal to be using -- it will be illegal to use cannabis inside a car, but with regard to forfeitures, low-level, low-volume cannabis arrests and stops don't meet the threshold for asset forfeiture seizures, so it -- there will be no impact as far as I can see for that.
Thank you. I do have a question to follow up to that. Are we going to have to -- is there any additional training that needs to be done once cannabis becomes legal? Training for the officers, what to look for, or is it kind of something they already know?
Yeah, you know, it's driving while impaired. Covers a lot of them. There's currently no -- there's no test that we can use in the field that's going to measure the THC level or cannabis in someone's system. So it's really going to be just the impaired driver. There is some specialized training that several of our officers have been to. It's -- they're specialized drug detection officers, you know, based on the eyesights and the way the eyes move and other characteristics and also lack of -- lack of a smell of alcohol on someone's breath. They're called DREs, Drug Recognition Experts. So we do have some officers that are trained that way. Our plan is to slowly roll out some additional training to get more DREs in the field, and hopefully some of the technology will catch up to law enforcement out there so we can administer some kind of a test at roadside to determine if someone's under the influence of drugs.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll wrap up by saying, Chief, and to staff, I know we've been using LPRs probably the last four years, three and a half years, and originally I was a little skeptical, Big Brother type of thing. At the time of the test, I want to say, one of the folks that presented to us said something along the lines of, if you drive in the Chicagoland area in your car for 20 minutes, there's a good chance you've been photographed 15 times already. And that was four or five years ago. Guaranteed that that number has skyrocketed. So-- So I fully endorse the use of these. I've talked to enough detectives. And all it takes is a little thread for a detective to unravel a case. They just need a lead, and I can't, I mean countless, countless times, and you mentioned the most recent one, had a burglary, and it's just so important. It's really a tool that has been added at your request, in my opinion, that has been quite a difference maker. A new tool that is just fantastic. And I will say, in that, it's extra important for everybody to keep an eye out. If they're, you know, if you see a car in your neighborhood you don't normally recognize, just keep an eye out. But I really appreciate the hard work. I know all of the leads and other stuff in cases that actually, you know, they're not solved with that, but they're started with that, and then they're solved through hard police work. So I want to thank you and the entire staff.
Thank you very much. And our detectives have really done a great job within the last year tracking down a lot of those leads from LPRs. Thank you.
All right. What's next, City Manager?
Now we will jump into Public Works. And as you see, there's a lot of subcategories that Director Killian will come up and go through. I think in the past, what we've done is kind of paused at each one, answered any questions that the council may have. I know Howard has some support team here tonight as well.
Okay.
I see Cory and I see Paul, and I thought I saw Kent. And so we will get started on page 126.
Thanks, Bob. 126?
Thank you. So what we'll do tonight is, instead of getting down into the individual accounts, we're going to do more of a broad brush and look at the major projects that we have going on throughout the Public Works General Fund first. I think that'll be a good spot to break. So one of the big projects we have coming up this year is the start of the train station project, the metro station. If you remember, this has been going on, the initial, the Phase 1 project, for a little over a year now. Cory, through her hard work, has picked up just over 20.4 million dollars in state and federal and metro funding. So the project itself continues to creep up. We're seeing about 3.5% escalation in construction costs. So what we're doing, you'll see that a upcoming city council meeting is the final contract with CDM Smith. And what staff's proposing, and you've already seen in a report, as opposed to going through, using our matching funds for state and federal funding for the Phase 2, that process alone is taking over a year to get contracts through IDOT, which would push the project back at least one year. And when you look at that overall, the cost, that's probably about a million to a million and a half dollars more just in price escalation, waiting for that further out time period. But even with that, with using our own funds, we're expecting design to take 18 to 24 months for the design and bidding of the train station project. And then, once that's going, we're expecting construction to start in 2022. And then, construction itself will take about another 18 to 24 months. And if you remember, this is a new station, new underpass, platforms, parking lots. It's really redoing that whole several-block stretch of the train station in the downtown. So what we're looking at is, while we do have some numbers out there of what the station may cost in 2022 when we bid this out, the big thing to remember is that we do have the 20.4 million in funding. And then, city, local funds, or any other funds we may pick up, make up the difference. And while that large number, and right now, we're looking at almost 26 million dollars, is our estimate, we will know more as we get into the Phase 2 design over the next year. We'll start to really narrow down costs and be able to look at cost savings items along the way with that. One of the, another big items we have in Public Works is our street program. And what's interesting to note is this is the first time in several years that the city will not be running any programs using state or federal funding. Due to methodology changes and scoring changes, we will have no projects where we have state or federal funding involved that we're running. This last year, we had West Avenue and we had Spring Road. Previously, we had North York through the downtown here. We've had Poplar. So all that funding, again, they've changed the methodology where some of these smaller streets are really not going to be eligible anymore, or very tough to get the funding to do those. As far as the street resurfacing project itself, in order to keep our funding more level, our budget more level, we are keeping the funding at the same level as we did in 2019. If you remember, the last several years, we were increasing about $200,000 a year. But we are recommending that we keep it the same this year. Moving on to stormwater projects, another big item that Public Works has been dealing with. This past year, we finished the Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Southwest Stormwater Projects. So to date, we have now constructed 11 projects totaling 112 acre-feet of detention, protecting 353 homes, at a cost a little over 30.5 million dollars. So this, in 2020, you'll see in the next several weeks, at the council level and at the Public Works Committee, we'll be bringing forth the, a design for the Sailor Swain Valette area, which will take care of that neighborhood. And depending which design we go with, we'll probably have it designed and constructed within the next year. So that project will be moving forward with. In looking at stormwater itself, one of the items that staff has begun to look at is the stormwater pumping stations. So we have seven major pumping stations that basically pump out our storm sewers when it gets to the creek, when the creek is at a high level. Those have really not been improved or any significant maintenance on them since those have been constructed back before the 1980s. So we've taken a systematic approach where we've kind of spaced out over the next seven to 10 years. Where we'll be looking at both design and improving those and upgrading them. Those improvements are going to be backup power supply because some of those don't have backup generation. Access in an emergency, literally some of them are on the flood side of the levee. And in a flooding situation, we cannot get to them to operate them and maintain them. And then, we'll also be looking at better pumping capabilities, which will increase what we can pump, but also improve efficiency and lower electric costs in the future. So in the 2020 budget, we do have money in the budget requesting for McKinley Pump Station Rehab, which will be our first one we're looking at. Moving on a little bit to forestry, the main items we have, if you look at our elm tree removal, this is something we always bring up every year. We started doing the removals back in 2004, where we had 2,813 trees. Since that time, as a city, we removed 1,521, 47 this past year. So we still have remaining 1,292 public elm trees that we still maintain. Ash tree removals, we started with 2,310. We removed 1,899. So we're down to 411 of those public ash trees that we still have to deal with. Some of the other items we're looking at in Public Works, which we've slowly been expanding on, it was mentioned tonight with the cooking oil, the recycling programs. Besides working just with Republic, and we are still continuing to work with ways to get the word out better towards our residents about proper recycling so we can keep the cost down and keep recycling very active in the community. So we do have the cooking oil recycling coming up. Several weeks ago, we did the pumpkin recycling, which has been going on for several years. We did try a paint recycling, which was very successful about a month or two ago, which we'll be continuing with, hopefully. And we do have four electronic pickups scheduled for next year. We did do four this year, and I believe we picked up a little over 69,000 pounds of recycling just at our pickups for those four dates. So we continue with that. Some of the major improvements, when you look at our Public Works Fund for next year, we do have our building improvements. We do have the repair and work at the Public Works roof, repair and replace the roof at the Public Works. Hard to believe, but that building is just hitting 20 years old now. So we're starting to get in some of the major repairs we need to work on there. Again, we do have the stormwater pumping stations that we'll be working on. Everything else, we're pretty much toeing the line. We do have minor increases for supplies and electricity in those items. We continue to look at using compressed natural gas for our fleet. We are looking at changing over another group of vehicles for this coming year. We're seeing good success in lowering our fuel costs. And actually, our maintenance has increased because it's a little cleaner burning, that we're seeing less wear and tear on the vehicle, engine itself. When you look at our salt, and again, we thank you for allowing us to build our large salt shed several years ago. We can hold a little bit over 5,000 tons of salt. We're going into this year at about 4,000 ton, 3,500 to 4,000. But we are, in this coming year budget, asking for about $125,000 more. And again, that's to replenish our supply because we did have a heavy usage last year with a lot of ice storms near the end of the season. But also, we've seen a significant price increase in salt than we've seen in past years. So I guess if we wanted to, if there's any questions on the general fund portions of Public Works, we'd be happy to answer any of them.
Okay, Public Works questions? Which we've covered, with what we've covered so far? Anyone? Lemon Bram?
Yes, thank you. On page, what page? On page 129, I'm going to talk about a couple of items at the same time. And that's asphalt patching 30-02, alley maintenance 30-08, and concrete street patching at 30-11. My question is kind of a little bit general and touches on all three, so I want to talk to that. Asphalt patching is increasing about 10 grand, not much, from 95 to 105 is the proposal, proposed budget. Alley maintenance is increasing from 130,000 to 150,000 as proposed. But there's a significant reduction in concrete street patching from what was proposed last year at 220,000. And essentially, all of that was spent down to almost 100,000 less, about 85,000 less at 135,000. I do understand that we've done and we've increased slightly the resurfacing of some of the concrete streets. So I get that plays a part of it. But I believe, at least from my anecdotal evidence, if you would, that there's still significant patching that needs to be done in the concrete streets because we're still, I don't know, nine years out for, somewhere around there, nine years roughly, to resurface all of the concrete streets. So I'm conflicted on why a lot of the streets now are newer asphalt. But we need additional dollars to patch them. But the concrete streets only grow older every year, and we're reducing the funding on that patching. So if staff, if, Howard, if you can please speak to that.
The major difference we have in the concrete street patching was in 2019, we carried over about $100,000 from the previous year. The contractor was not able to get to all the concrete patching in 2018. So if you look back in 2017, concrete street patching was 22,000. We're at 101,018. And then, it was the significant increase last year up to 220,000. And most of that, again, almost doubled that amount because it was a carryover. The contractor wasn't able to do the work. So.
We're from what year, sorry?
From 2018 into 2019. So actually, if you look at the concrete street patching of 135, it is a slight increase over the average of 100 to 110,000 over the last several years. But just reduced because we had a major carryover due to the contractor availability at the end of 2018.
Okay. I'll have to take that offline with Director Trozine because I'm not understanding on how that would reflect in the budget. But we can speak to that offline. We don't need to speak to that now. One other question in regards to patching. Builders or any reason why streets are torn up? I use builders because when a new house goes in, it, brand-new streets could be torn up to add the additional utilities. Can you speak to, I know we've had the conversation in the past, but especially to alert the public on, A, who does that patching? And then, the other part of who pays for the patching?
The patching after utilities are going, and again, with a new house going in, you could possibly have four patches. So we make them remove the water and the sanitary sewer back to the main itself. So it depends where the main and the sanitary are. And then, you could have an additional two patches going across, depending on where the water, the new water and service lines are. So the contractor puts them back in stone. And basically, we let them sit for almost a year because we do allow them to settle out. We do go over and hit cold patch over the top of them. But we have found that we do get a lot of settlement on those, so we leave those for a year. If you remember, along the Nitty Development on Third Street, where we had those cuts, even after they were permanently patched, they did continue to settle. So we like to leave that into that program, you know, we do let that settle out with a temporary asphalt. And then, we do go back in within about a year after that and do the permanent patching on those.
So they put in stone and we pay for the rest?
We cover the cold patch, and then we do the final patch.
And then the final patch. And we get no reimbursement from them for that?
Yeah, about $900 they pay in the permit fee for road patching.
And we feel that covers all the reviews and the costs and everything? Thank you.
Additional questions for Howard? Lemon Toledo?
Thank you. I have a fuzzy memory, but I think it was last year, maybe one of the, relatively recently, there was discussion about some new technology to better evaluate or triage the condition of our roads. And I believe we made the investment in that. And that was part of the justification for the investment was that we would better be able to predict out our costs. Can I get just an update on where that's at, and is that panning out as we expected?
We just, that contract actually went off later in this year. So we did just approve, the council did approve that, I believe, in September or October. So we did have the contractor start. They've started to do the initial, basically, videotaping or looking at the laser of every street. And now, over the winter, we'll start going through and putting in street condition, ages of the street, and do a lot of the background data. We probably won't have a full report until probably summer, late summer of next year. So we'll then use that ranking when we go into the 2021 budget and recommendations. So we did get started late on that program, but it does take about eight months to put all the data in and then run all the numbers, and then we'll use that from here on out.
So are we expected to reap any type of savings, or is it just an analysis tool?
What it looks at right now is it starts to predict when is the best time for you to do a road, to resurface it, or to reconstruct it. We don't do a lot of city reconstructions currently. So we basically are going back every 10, 15, 20 years in resurfacing. This will start to predict saying, okay, this road that you're looking at, it's such bad condition, you just let it go and reconstruct it in five years, let's say. Where it'll start to say, this road is going to start getting bad in three years, you need to resurface it in the next two. So you start, we'll actually see how you can best spend your money and look at that, which way to go it. We do use the Street Rejuvenator once or twice a year on these programs. Some of these programs, you can actually see where we're getting the value out of doing that. And might recommend do it a third time or a different year in its life cycle. So you'll start to see it. It'll be a better use of our money by predicting more what streets we should do at the right time.
Okay. Additional questions? Lemon Bram?
Thank you. Two last questions on this section, page 129. 3046 pavement striping. We're seeing, it looks like almost cut in half from at least last year. I know it's an increase from 2018. But I've noticed as we continue to do the resurfacing of the concrete streets with the asphalt, there was no real good reason to do some of the striping on the concrete because you don't see the striping. But with an increase in asphalt streets, I would expect actually to see more pavement striping. Can you please speak to this line item?
Sure. Again, the increase that you saw from 2018 to 2019 was a large carryover because the contractor in late in the year, they lost the season. So we are, again, the 45,000 projected this year is a slight increase. We're still only recommending that we carry 35,000 a year. We do have additional work in that because in the Central Business District, we have about 10,000 where we're still going back with the decorative crosswalks on the south side of the downtown on York Street, in those streets we just resurfaced. As far as the newly concrete streets going to asphalt, we don't stripe stop bars or crosswalks at every at every corner, only certain corners. So it's just limited which ones, you know, that are felt that have it existing or do need it.
Yeah, we've spoke with that F-line. I wasn't getting to that one, but anytime I see a decrease, I now know it's a carryover. The other item is 30-84. I'm assuming that the storm sewer cleaning is complete for all of Elmhurst, and that's why we're only seeing 25 grand here. And then the following year being 2021, we'll pick back up the cycle of hitting sections of town to complete, I don't remember if it was a four-year cycle, five, or whatever it was.
Right.
Is that inaccurate?
We had looked at it originally and requested some more funds for it when we started the budget, but we did reduce it by 75,000 this year in order to help out the overall budget of the city. And in looking at that, staff did evaluate it and felt that we really could get by with a lower amount this coming year because we had made such strides in the past year that we didn't feel we'd be spending that dollar amount once we took a major look at it. So you will see that numbers be requested again, but we feel that's adequate to keep up on what we're looking at right now.
So this year is just basic, maybe trouble spot cleaning?
And some inlet cleaning and that, correct.
But we are complete 100% with the first go-around through the city?
Yeah, we are complete.
Is that a certain size and greater, sewer size and greater?
Yeah, everything, we complete all the storm sewers.
Nice. Good work.
Thank you. When was the last time that was done?
Never.
Prior to that? I, more on a case-by-case basis, if there was a major blockage, it wasn't done systematically.
Yeah. Good to hear. Any other questions before we move on? I have a question for you, Howard. You mentioned the McKinley Pump Station. What, what would rehabbing or replacing do?
Paul, you want to address what we're doing specifically on that one? I don't have it in front of me. There's, yeah.
Testing, okay. So the McKinley pumping station is the same station that the Swain Valette new system will go into. Currently, that will be VFDs, pumps, additional outlet pipe, additional inlet pipe. The building will be modified, and from a structure standpoint, that's pretty much what it'll entitle. It's a complete rehab of the facility. It'll also be redundant pumping. Right now, we have a pump there. If it fails, we have none. So it'll be redone with multiple pumps so that if one fails, the other one can keep up.
Does any of the new replacement pumps allow for more efficient pumping and ultimately allow us to legally put more water into the creek?
These pumps will be much more efficient than the current pumps that are in place because of the age of the old pump with new technologies. We are working with Kent and county to see what improvements can be changed to put more water into the creek. We're doing a co-design where right now, we're looking at the information that we sent to the county to increase it if it's allowed, and then also if it's just a rehab item for item with the same pumpage. So either way, when this comes through, hopefully January, February, we'll be able to go either way.
Okay. That was it. Actually, that was it for me on pumping stations, but I did have a question. Howard, did you mention we have 500? Thank you, Paul. 500 ash trees left?
We have 411.
Okay. And do we have, does the city keep track of approximations in the rest of our urban forest, so private land? Do we have any idea what's?
No, we don't have an inventory on the private.
Okay. Was the ash tree, obviously, we're taking down so many in public, was that part of our, it was part of our planning, planting 30 years ago, 20 years ago? Was there a, so it must have been a good deal and makes sense at the time. Was there an equivalent call for ash trees on the private sector? Do we have a lot? You know, like if you had to guess? Are we taking care of 50% of the ash trees in town, or the other 50% private property or?
I don't, I haven't seen it that high. You know, there were definitely a good street tree back, you know, 30 years ago, 30 to 40 years ago. I don't, I haven't seen that many in, on private property. There are quite a few, but not the levels that we've seen on the public right of way.
Okay. Any other questions for Howard before we move on? Okay.
So that's, if there's any other, that's the questions then on the, all the Public Works general funds items, we're assuming. So we'll move to the Stormwater Fund. So Stormwater Fund is on the page 263, 260.
Are we going through salt and forestry and all of those, or we?
I thought we were going through-
Howard's summary was general, but I thought we were going questions one section at a time.
If you have questions on the general fund items, which are the subsets, we're happy to answer those.
Well, is there more information to add before we turn it over for questioning?
No, we have nothing to add.
Oh, here we go. So I would say that we've gone through administration and street maintenance so far. Does that sound right? And we've got any additional questions or comments from snow removal, forestry, electrical, rubbish, municipal buildings, equipment, equipment maintenance, and benefits? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. Page 141, rubbish collection. Really just the general question about how our current contract is going. What is the expense versus revenue? What does that look like for this year? And any further updates on the recycling end of things? Especially, I think, I don't know, three years ago, we started recycling in the downtown area in CBD. If that's been beneficial at all, et cetera.
Do you want to handle the expenses or?
So generally, we bill what the contract says plus the administration fee. I just asked Tom, and things are moving along the way we thought they would with the contract as far as the financial side. Operations side, I'll turn it back to Howard.
In the downtown area specifically with the recycle, first of all, we continue to meet once a month with the people from Republic to try to come up with better ways to get the recycling word out there. We met with some residents. We've met with the Cool Cities Coalition to try to figure out ways, and it's just, it's a moving target on the best way to actually get the word out. But the main thing is we're trying to get the word about keeping the recycling clean first, and then it'll be more of the right stuff. In the downtown specifically, we've actually increased the number of collections. We've almost gone to a daily collection of all the downtown garbage cans because we were getting a lot of overflow in certain areas. And again, that's because the, how successful the downtown is. One of the problems we had with recycling downtown was when they were right next to garbage cans, when people would find the garbage can was filled up, let's say, of ice cream containers or something else, they went, oh, here's a can right next door to it. So we were getting a lot of contamination. We weren't getting a lot of good quality recycling coming out of the downtown. So we're hoping that's switching over, and we've only done it for about two months now of the higher pickups that we'll actually see a better result on that.
Follow-up? In regards to yard waste, I'm surprised to see yard waste keep going up. I would think over the many years now, more people are mulching or have a landscape service, et cetera. I don't remember, but I believe that's built into our overall contract with Republic. But is there any thought on why we continue to see that expense increase when I would think just the opposite? Kind of like with residential telephones, everybody has a cellphone, so you're seeing less of the residential. I would think you'd be seeing less of yard waste nowadays.
And again, don't forget that also includes the leaf pickup throughout the year. We just ran the numbers. We're actually seeing from last year to this year, an increase of about 18 ton a month on average, more yard waste that we're picking up than the previous year. So we are still seeing increases. Now, we did have about 61 homes take advantage of the toters for the compost recycling, which also is included in the yard waste numbers because it's all the organic. So you do have that little bit of number starting to kick in. Only 61, but again, you know, it is the start. We're seeing a little bit more.
Thank you. When is our contract up, next up for review with Republic?
At least three, I think. I think it's three years at this point at least.
So two questions. One is, I mean, I just have a kind of an anecdotal or passing understanding of the recycling world as a whole, but I understand that the Chinese are no longer buying our recycling anymore. So I think recycling is, can be inefficient. Are we expecting to see, assuming we continue our recycling program here in Elmhurst in three years, are we expecting to see a big increase because of the cost that the handlers have for recycling? Can you look into your crystal ball, Howard, and tell me what's going to happen?
Right now, recycling is built into our rate, we have. And from what Republic has told us time and time again is that, they said they were going to recycle for that price, they will continue to recycle without raising costs. You probably will see in the future, and we're not seeing in the area here, but around the country, that there's actually towns dropping out of recycling programs, or what they're saying to residents, if you want to recycle, this is the cost, so you're getting, you know, $15 for rubbish and maybe $10 to recycle a month. So they're starting to see that take places where it's, it's just getting costly. You're seeing some of the industries drop out, like glass is really not profitable anymore. No one's taking it. So you have some communities that have just stopped picking up glass. So it's possible you may see that down the road. But for now, Republic has pledged that, they have honored that, they will pick up these items at the cost they've given us and will continue to do throughout this process.
For the next three years.
Yeah.
We'll have to see what it looks like after that.
Correct.
And then, believe it or not, I actually had this question this morning from a resident. Where do the leaves go? Howard, where do the leaves go?
Leaves go to a compost facility. I don't know which one.
That's okay. Compost facility is good enough.
Yes.
Asked and answered. All right. Additional questions for Howard on this? Alderman Levin, on this, this item before we go to the next item.
Does that include, are we at public benefits? Is that part of the category we're on?
If you're on it, we're on it.
Okay, good. Page 148, line 8025, street improvements. I see the capital budget has $100,000 still for the Prairie Path, which we're not doing-
I'm sorry, Alderman Levin, I lost you. 148, well-
Page 148, line 8025.
Got it.
$100,000 of that 240 is Prairie Path. Is that, so I assume we're not proceeding, and maybe Kent knows this, that we're not going down the design, but this is for other, this is for other-
Correct.
-the improvements that we might decide to do?
Right. We left it in as a placeholder in case we were to do extra striping or signage possibly of a island, the safety or a little bit of widening of the roadway through there for, you know, a center island. So that's just a placeholder if there's a decision made to move forward with any of those items.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Hey. Alderman Park?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go back to the trees for a second. You said we had to take down all of those ones because of illness and whatnot. When do we replant them, and what kind of trees are we replanting them with? You said that ash aren't really good street trees anymore. What is a good street tree?
We have a whole list of a variety. We're probably getting about eight to 10 different species that we can look at depending what's available. So it's a variety each year.
It just comes up to what's available?
Right. Again, there's some standard ones. You have lindens, there's oaks, there's, you know, a variety of maples and some other ones that are available each year, so.
I want one that grows fast.
Cypress.
End disease resistant.
That's my big giant almond, I'm sad.
Any other questions? Scott?
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions on any of the individual items listed on the review schedule? Snow removal, forestry, electrical, rubbish disposal, municipal buildings, central maintenance equipment, or public benefits before we move on to Stormwater? Alderman Dunn?
I'm sorry, I just want to backtrack a little bit on page 126, back in admin, line 2007 through workers' comp. What did line item Alderman Dunn? 2007.
Got it, got it.
This is just an anomaly this year. Wondering, we also have a category for claims. Do those relate at all? Another page.
So I'll answer the first part, which is yes, we had a settlement this year that was very significant. However, we also received significant reimbursements in the last week. This is a tune of about $400,000, if I remember, a little bit north of $400,000 in reimbursements from insurance companies for those. Yes. Now, it's time to answer the second part of that.
The claims are for general liability outside of workers' comp, so different.
Additional questions? Okay, let's move on, Howard.
The next one is on your, the Stormwater Fund, which is on page 260 to 264. So again, the main thing we've done are those projects which we mentioned earlier. The big difference this year is staff is looking at the funding. It used to be going towards the property acquisition, and a lot of the funds, if you remember, we just bought five houses over the last year, year and a half along Swain. That the money this year is going more towards a more general account called land improvement, which will allow us to kind of move that money where we may have issues coming up. We don't see the large property acquisition being needed, you know, in the future that we're pretty much winding down on that currently. The other project we're looking at again, besides the Sailor Swain Valette, there's the IGA being worked on with the school district, which may kick into gear either the York and/or the Jackson School Project, either into next year, more likely into 2021.
Questions on Stormwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page 262, line 0103, debt service. I just, so last year, we had, I'm just trying, maybe City Manager can help me understand this better, because it came up before. If something was in the 2019 budget last year, and then it doesn't show up on our 2020 budget as having been in the 2019 budget, does it, someone said, does that mean it automatically rolls over? But that wasn't my understanding. So in 2019, we had a budget of 665, 700,000, and then when you look at the 2020 book, it doesn't have anything that was in the budget. Is that a rollover? And you can get back to me if you want, but-
Which line item are you on, Alderman?
0103, property taxes, 311.
What page? 262. Got it.
The debt service line? 0103, okay.
I don't see anything before 2020, Scott, is there?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you look at the 2019 budget, we had 665,000.
Got it.
History major. So I'm just trying to see if it's, does it roll over? Is it just drop out? Because it seems, well, I'll let you answer the question before I say anything.
I'm going to let Alderman-
Alderman Trozina.
We should be so lucky.
So I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right line item, page 262. Page 262, the property taxes, 0103, debt service?
Right.
So, that 595, 300 in 2020, basically, when we were preparing the budget, this was assuming that we're issuing the 2019 bond issue and that we would use property taxes so we would not abate that debt service that follows that bond issue. The city council, based on a recommendation from the finance committee, said abate all debt service this year, including the 2019 proposed bond issue. So, that line item really should go away for 2020. It would be zero. So, we would, we'll include that in our carryover list of adjustments that we would make to the budget.
All right. So, this, so you're saying the 595, 300 is going to go away?
Correct. That's the revenue that we would collect from the county if we did not abate the 19 bond issue.
All right. And then, is last year, I think we said the same thing, that the 665, 700 would go away. So, my question is really one of more, so that we as a council can follow it. Shouldn't we have in this book that the budget was 665, 700, and the estimate is zero? Because I see a lot of these items where it drops out, and you don't know where it went or what happened. And I don't remember us doing it that way in the past, doing it the way we're doing it now, as opposed to having it show up as having been there, which it was, and then showing zero, that we didn't spend it.
I'll have to think about that because, again, this, you know, we would zero this out in our carryover recommendations. That would be council action. And so, your final budget will actually be zero for that line item. So, when we're preparing the 2021 budget, it's going to show zero again.
So, that budget would have zeroed out after our budget discussion because of the abatement.
And the carryovers.
Changing the budget.
Yeah.
Your budget wasn't the final budget that you're looking at right now.
Can I get this?
Thank you.
Good question. Keep them coming. Any additional questions on Stormwater before we move on? Alderman Toledo?
Well, Alderman, New York and I were just having a somewhat technical discussion, so I, maybe we'll just ask and get this resolved now. Related to the abatement in a way, we have, we have funds available, as the committee discussed and as we recommended, as you just addressed, we have funds available from our quarter percent home rural sales tax that's allocated to the Stormwater Fund to pay the debt service that we've been planning to pay from prior bond issues, and then also the additional around 600,000 for the new debt that we'll be issuing this year in 2019. We have a schedule, Director Trezim, I'm pointing at you because you'll have the answer to this. We have a schedule available from some prior committee meetings about fund balance, the home rural sales tax quarter percent fund balance available. And that number is projected for 2020 to end at 1.9 million. Does that, does that tie, where is that balance represented in the budget documents that we're talking about now? Because, like, for example, the fund balance at the end of the year for 2020 proposes 4.5 million. So, like, I think some of that revenue is in there somewhere, but then it's projected to be only 800,000 next year. So, where's the magic happening there?
The magic happens. The magic happens where we've discussed at the committee level, you know, there are other projects that are out there that we will need to review before they get approved because some of them don't have funding sources yet. So, as an example, there's a review of the Stormwater System over the next couple of years that it totals about $800,000. That does not have funding right now. For the most part, we have funding for all the projects that we've discussed, being, Director Killian mentioned it, the Sailor Swain Project. We're issuing the 19 bond issue for that. The two school projects, we pretty much have all the funding available in the 19 bond issue also. But that million nine was strictly the debt service and the revenue. But we do have other expenditures that are allocated to the Stormwater Fund that we really need to be careful with on moving them forward to make sure they have a funding source.
Okay. So, that, those quarter percent revenues that would be reflected on the revenue side, we've got more expenditures, and then that's netting out.
Correct. Correct.
Anyone else? Gee, it's almost 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
What do you think of that, City Manager?
I think it's time to take a break for tonight.
Wow. What a fantastic idea. Perfect time to take a break. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Danny.